Good evening and welcome to the fiscal outlook presentation for the Freehold Regional High School District. My name is Sean Boyce, I'm the Assistant Superintendent for Business. And tonight's presentation has purpose, twofold purpose. The first, a specific purpose, is to comply with the provisions of the school, New Jersey's school budget law that require a public hearing on any annual school budget, but there's also a broader purpose. And that is to understand the economic context that this budget, or any budget, falls into when looking at the overall financial structure and landscape and trajectory of the school district and how that's going to impact the decisions that we make in this budget and from here forward. The best starting point is going to be to take a look at school funding and get the lay of the land. And from there, that can be the backdrop for most of our conversation tonight. The central issue, the issue that school boards and superintendents and business administrators are talking about is a shift in school funding that is underway based on modifications to the Funding Formula legislation that occurred last summer. So, the Funding Formula, the state has a constitutional obligation to provide a thorough and efficient education. And every 10 to 15 years, the state revisits that Funding Formula and tweaks it or rewrites it entirely. The last time that that work happened was back in 2008 and there was a considerable amount of thought put into what was the best way to approach it. And that has been in place for the last decade or so, up until last summer when there was some legislation passed to modernize the SFRA, the Funding Formula, and results in some significant shifts of funding from certain districts to other districts. So, this change and the Funding Formula in general really is the driver and all of, everything else that has to do with finances in response to, in reaction to changes made in school funding for school districts. That impact of that funding is felt both in the operating budget that we're putting together and presenting to you tonight, as well as capital planning, which is a longer view, but it's an important aspect of our overall financial condition. So, the SFRA, and it's fairly straightforward how they went about designing this. And so, from a design intent perspective, here's how they approach it. It's a two-step process. The first is to quantify student needs, and then the second step would be to determine how to pay for that. Quantifying student needs, a lot of work was done on developing a cost model. But what are the, without regard to dollars, what are the program services that students need in order to achieve a thorough and efficient education and be effective in adulthood? And the work that was done there is on the Department of Education website, it's an interesting read, but the takeaway here is that that cost model, and it's updated every two to three years and recently received a fairly significant update to properly represent the costs associated with the programs and services that the state has determined students need. But that cost model is uniformly applied to all districts across the state. And the way it's used is, it's applied to each district's specific demographic profile, student profile. And when you do that, what's generated is a single number called the Adequacy Budget, and that's going to be unique to each district. It's unique because no two districts have exactly the same student profile. So, by student profile, you know, high school kids cost more than elementary school kids. There's a base amount and then there are supplemental amounts assigned to students that are considered at-risk, that's a poverty-related term, or English language learners, or special education students. All of those are embedded in the cost model. In order to determine as accurately as any broad formula can, what the amount of money is that is necessary for a district to deliver a thorough and efficient education, and that's represented by the Adequacy Budget on a district-by-district basis. The next component of it is to determine how to pay for it. And what the SFRA says is that, okay, so local fair share, which is property taxes, each community will pay according to their ability to pay. And the difference will be made up by state aid. So, local fair share, to determine the ability to pay on a district-by-district basis. The approach is to look at two wealth indicators for a community and then convert them into the ability to pay property taxes. Using a multiplier, which is determined by the state in doing this conversion. And the multipliers have proven to be somewhat erratic over the years, and that, as it turns out, has a very significant impact on how the district approaches budgeting and providing for the things that we have here in the district right now. Let's take a look at what that is. The chart on the left, the multiplier growth, this is just in terms of pure numbers. Changes in those multipliers that drive the district's ability to pay property taxes, their local fair share. And they've been, property more so than income have been somewhat erratic over the years. And the impact has also been, the chart on the right is local fair share. The top line, the red line there is per the SFRA, as they see our wealth over time. The green line is, though, if the original multipliers were used, original as in the first year of the SFRA, which was fiscal year '09, that's what our local fair share would have been, or would be right now, if those multipliers didn't change. Let me bring this down into a micro example so that you have a sense of the impact of changing multipliers over these 10 years. In fiscal year '09, so in 2009, if a family lived in a home whose value, their market value was $300,000 and their household income was $100,000, the local fair share calculation would result in them being able to pay. Their ability to pay property taxes would be $3,600 roughly. In 10 years later, in 2020, if their home was still valued at $300,000 and their income, their household income was still $100,000, according to the formula today, their ability to pay property taxes would be $4,600. So, a $1,000 increase, yet no change in their wealth indicators. We have raised this question to the state, a number of districts have raised this question to the state, that we feel that not only are the multipliers unpredictable and erratic, but they also disproportionately affect property-heavy, residential property-heavy communities. Because as you can see, there's a 56% increase in their conversion factor for property with only a 9.6% increase in the income side. So now, let's take a look at the funding of adequacy. Because remember, the two components that a school district, two main sources of revenue to run a school district are property taxes and state aid. And according to the Funding Formula, local fair share, or property taxes, pays first dollar up until their ability to pay, or up until the total of their particular adequacy budget. And in that case, state aid would be zero, because the idea is that the two sources, the two green circles at the bottom of your page, between them have to fund the adequacy budget. So, on the left here, local fair share versus our tax levy, what has that really looked like? So, the top line is familiar from the previous slide. That is the curve of the state's interpretation of this community's ability to pay over time. The green line has been what our actual property tax levy has been. On the state aid side, the red is per the Funding Formula, what we should have received in state aid, and the green is what we did receive in state aid. So, a couple of things to point out here. It should come as no surprise that under the SFRA, as the local fair share goes up on the left side, the state aid would go down. Because the two of them together are trying to reach adequacy, and obviously, the more that the state can put into the local fair share column, the less difference there is for them to pick up. The reason that the state aid does not follow the dip that's reflected is that for a number of years here under the Christie administration, the Funding Formula was ignored, and the governor simply said, "Everybody gets what they got last year." So that's why we're looking at that flat green line across the state aid side. The difference between what we have been receiving per year and what we are eligible to receive is called Adjustment Aid. That's the terminology that the state uses. And that's the difference between the $46 million and $21 million. So, the general fund budget for this, for Freehold Regional is approximately $200 million. $50 million or so we get from the state, and the rest is from local sources. So, the modernization, modification to the Funding Formula, that piece of legislation that passed last summer, was looking to address Adjustment Aid for districts and to phase them out over a seven-year period. In other words, to bring state aid down to what the SFRA dictates. In other districts where there's tremendous enrollment growth, their red line for, per the SFRA, state aid goes in the other direction. So there are a number of districts out there that are receiving less state aid than they should, and then there are districts like Freehold Regional that are receiving more state aid than they should. So, a word about that. The message that has been sent out by the state and through the media for this modernization of the Funding Formula has been that districts like Freehold Regional are overfunded. So I just want to comment on that. What they really mean to say is that we are overaided. Overfunded sounds like they have too much money, they're spending too much money. That's not what they're saying. They're saying we're overaided, and really, the reason they're saying that is because they believe that Freehold Regional is undertaxed. Back to the left side of the screen, the local fair share. The state says your tax levy should be $166 million, not $137 million. So, what they're looking to do is close that gap and essentially shift the funding of Freehold Regional's adequacy budget from its current prorated amounts between the levy and state aid and shift funding from state aid to the property taxpayer. And, you know, our position on this has been, from the beginning, that, listen, we are willing to, as I think every community is, to pay our fair share. We take issue with the calculation of fair share. And that the artificial increase in the multipliers used to convert the wealth indicators into ability to pay has been manipulated in a way that raises the local fair share and suppresses the state's responsibility through state aid. Now, it hasn't mattered over the last several years because the formula was never run, fully run, and districts received just the same amount that they got the year before. So it hasn't come to fruition until last summer when the modernization legislation passed, it was called S2, Senate Bill 2, and put into play immediately last summer. Here's what that looks like. So, for the original budget for fiscal year 2019, which is the 1819 school year, the year we're currently in and coming to the close of, was $51 million. Once that year has started, S2 passed, and the district was notified that it was going to lose 1.3 million in aid. And then we received notice in March for the budget, the upcoming budget that is being proposed tonight, that we're going to lose another $3.8 million in aid. And you can see, according to the legislation, how this smoothes out our current funding, or our recent funding of $51 million, down to what they believe we should be receiving, which is $21 million. Now, that's a significant amount of money that's dropping off year after year. And there is not going to be an opportunity to respond to that through property taxes because there is a separate and independent law that limits increasing property tax levy by, and it's, the limit is 2% increase. So if you extrapolate this out, increases in property taxes cannot keep pace with reductions in state aid, which will then result into a markedly different set of programs and services available here at the district. So that's the SFRA, that's the Funding Formula, the lay of the land, and really something that has driven a lot of our strategic thinking and decisions we're making both short-term and long-term that are consistent with the strategic plan that the district has spent a lot of time and effort and thought in over recent years to decide what's the most targeted way to spend the available resources that are in the best interest of our student programs. The annual school budget that is being proposed tonight for the board to vote on is summarized here on the revenue side. There's also a handout that has some more specific information. But the comparative general fund budget is really the best apples-to-apples view of an annual school budget. And you can see the drop-off in state aid and the increase in property taxes there. The other item of note would be fund balance, also known as surplus. And the district has managed its surplus in a way that preserves options and protects us from sudden abrupt changes in funding from the state level. The fiscal year 20 budget, as presented here, is an accelerated aggressive use of surplus that will, when combined with future years' loss in state aid, present significant challenges for the district. And in the short term, if we look at the projections for state aid decreases for the fiscal year 21 budget, 2% increase on the tax levy and the change in the available surplus, we're estimating to be $10 million, have $10 million less revenue than we currently have. Half of that because of state aid cuts, and the other half due to changes in the local effort, which would include the tax levy and fund balance or surplus. There are two other funds here that are just part of the overall document. Special Revenue Fund is for grants and other restricted kind of revenues, and you can see comparatively at $3 million. It's a relatively small component of the overall budget. And then the Debt Service Fund at $5.5 million, that's payment of a long-term debt, and that's something we're going to circle back to. Think of this as, you know, your mortgage payment. So 20 years ago, the district issued bonds to get the funding to build Coltsneck High School and additions to other schools and things like that, and then are paying it back over time, similar to how we do it at home with our mortgage. So that's the revenue scenario. The budget is flat in a comparative apples-to-apples. There are no capital projects included in this budget, which is the Row Capital Reserve. We were able to put $4 million to take care of some building system needs in the current year, and we're doing that, but opportunities to do that have dissipated for a variety of reasons that we're covering here in this presentation in a little bit. And we'll talk about that. So, let me talk a little bit about the tax levy cap. There are some options to expand on the 2% increase maximum for school districts. They're few and far between. One mechanism available, and it's not an expansion of the 2%, but it's a deferral of a piece of the 2%, is called cap banking. So, the state, when they put forth this cap legislation, wanted to give school districts an opportunity to not go up to a 2% increase if they chose to, and allow them to bank some or all of that 2% for use in subsequent years. Over the years, what this slide shows is that the actual tax levy represented in green versus the maximum amount allowed if we were to use all dollars available to us every year. So the aggregate difference over this period of time is $30 million. Since the implementation of the 2% cap on the levy, this district has not levied $30 million that it was eligible to. So, we've tried to be responsive to the time, the economic times, make responsible choices throughout the last decade or so with regards to property tax levy. This budget being proposed tonight has a 2.5% increase, and the reason for that is that we are accessing some banked cap. So that was levy available last year, which was never put into place, or never collected. And that's the extent of our bank cap. There is no further bank cap to go in future years. And the levy for the current year is a 2.5% increase. So how does that impact communities in particular? So Freehold Regional is a little unique with being a regional district, having a single tax levy, and then eight communities to break that down against. There are three pieces, three moving pieces that drive the percentage share allocation of the Freehold Regional's tax levy to these eight communities. This is, the allocation methodology was imposed on the districts, was imposed when the district was first organized, has been in place since then. And it takes a look at how many students, both elementary and high school students, does a community have, and then splits the property value of that community and prorates the property value in accordance with the percentages of elementary versus high school students. So, things that could affect a community's percentage share of the regional levy. If their high school, the number of students they had in high school went up, well, that's going to shift more of their property value and ultimately, a higher percentage share of the levy to that community. Or if their elementary, their high school stayed the same and their elementary went down, again, that still impacts the prorating of property value and causes an increase in the percentage share for that community, or of course, an increase in their property value overall. But the thing that's difficult for the communities to understand is that there may not be no change whatsoever in your particular community, but changes in other of the eight communities could drive, or could impact your percentage share. So, there's more information online, I did a presentation on this, and I'll try and link this to that so that you can look at that a little closer. But as you can see, there are some ups and some downs, and therefore, all or some of those three reasons, for those three moving parts of elementary enrollment, high school enrollment, and property value in your particular community, and all of that relative to the other seven communities that are part of the regional. So over time, what we've seen is abrupt changes in property taxes from year to year. We've made recommendations to the legislature over time, over the years, ideas on how we can smooth this process out. Some things like rolling through your average versus such a specific adjustment on a year-by-year basis, which causes the peaks and valleys and the spikes of property taxes, and ups in some communities and downs in others. So, that's something that we'll continue to press and we'll make progress to the extent that we are able. But overall, it is equitable, fair, and equitable. It's just not entirely that smooth. On the appropriation side, and again, in the handout, there's additional detail here. The appropriation side is fairly straightforward. There are no reductions in services or changes to programs. There is a reduction in staffing, a contraction due to declining enrollment. So, each year for the last several years, we've gone down five to 10 teachers. Enrollment has been steadily declining, anywhere from 1% to 2%, 1.4 on average per year for the last five years or so. And we expect that to continue. So, the byproduct of that is a contraction of staff, and that's reflected in this budget as well. As you can notice, there's a zero included in this budget for any capital improvements. The annual operating budget, under the current legislative environment and the budget law that's in place right now, an annual school budget does not provide districts with opportunities to take care of big-ticket facility improvements. And we're talking end-of-life, you know, roof replacements, HVAC, end-of-life equipment replaces, things like that, where the district has a track record, a long track record of being able to do that kind of thing within the confines of an annual school budget and not issue additional debt. Those opportunities are coming to a close. We recently finished up a large-scale energy savings improvement program. And what that allowed us to do was leverage future energy savings in order to get the funding necessary to replace end-of-life equipment, mostly HVAC equipment throughout the district, with high-efficiency energy equipment that would then generate the savings that we were counting on to pay for it. All in all, it's a net-zero prospect financially, and we get to replace our equipment. So, and we were able to do that outside of issuing debt through the Debt Service Fund, issuing any bonds to that effect. But any reserves that the district has have been depleted. There's really no mechanism to replenish them because each budget is becoming so tight that there's not excess appropriations which can be set aside for future facility projects, something that has been available to districts in the past. Changes year over year, salaries are, compensation in general is down 1.8 million, and employee benefits are up 1.8 million. Of course, there's shifting of funding, of funding other than that in accordance with our strategic plan. But the big movers would be those two salaries down and employee benefits up. Again, the handout supplemental to this presentation has some additional information. Again, the handout supplemental to this presentation has some additional information, additional detail. So how do we stack up? And this is a, an argument that we've made with our legislators when addressing funding. Is that, that Freehold Regional is really built to provi- ma- provide maximum opportunity for, for our students, any student that lives within our, our footprint. I mean, our spending has shown here, and this is the last audited financial information, actual spend information available. And, you know, we're at fourteen thousand oh twenty-seven for cost per pupil. And you can see the, the averages for all of the other components and remembering that high school students are the most expensive students. So as a high school-only district, you would expect us to be one of the higher bars here. But, but we're not, we're, you know, fifteen percent lower than the other high school districts in, in the state. And there are thirty-one of us, high school-only districts altogether. But, but we're even outperforming, financially outperforming districts that, that have K to eight students as well, which we would expect them to be lower than us since those students cost less to educate at that level. We'll continue to make that case. We think districts like Freehold Regional don't fit into the funding formula. And any broad funding formula, you're going to have outliers. It can't address district-specific circumstances in, in a, in a broad application of a, of a formula. We understand that, but we think there needs to be some release valves to consider and, and some path to a mechanism to access funding because of the uniqueness and, and the specific metrics that are achieved hereby Freehold Regional. So we're efficiently run, we have outstanding results, we have extensive opportunities with our, our magnet programs, full comprehensive high schools. And those are the types of things that are at risk should the state funding continue down the path that it's currently, currently going. So the other larger, the other piece of a larger economic context beyond this annual budget or annual budgets in general is the, is, is a referendum, which is, you know, a, a, a question put to the voters. And voters decide whether or not for a range of projects that they authorize a school district to issue bonds to get the funding to do those projects and then pay it back through Debt Service, as I mentioned earlier, over the next twenty years. So the district went out for a referendum in October of 2018 unsuccessfully. It was a forty-million-dollar referendum and it was for this gr- this group of work that you see on the slide here. The forty million dollars, we, we were also getting state support for that through Debt Service Aid to the tune of about thirty percent. So view that as a thirty percent discount on the work. So that state funding would have paid for forty mil- or for thirty percent of that forty million dollars. And, you know, unfortunately, that, that wasn't passed. And we, we listened to the community since then and we revisited our, the structure of our referendum question. And in March, the board took action to offer three questions in November on Election Day for the community's consideration. So question one are really those critical essential items that will, are going to happen whether the referendum passes or not. So if the referendum does not pass, these types of things will need to be funded through our annual operating budget, which is already going to be under significant stress because of straight aid, state aid situations. We identified two other groups of projects or separated groups out from the original referendum into a question two and a question three for the community's consideration. The important thing to know here is that question two and question three's success is contingent on question one's success. So if one doesn't pass, two or three, even if they do pass at, at the polls, won't be put into play because they're contingent on one passing. So one is really the critical one. And there, there'll be a campaign to inform the community between now and November in a variety of ways because we think that it really, and, and for the referendum, for state aid, for the entire district operation, the more the community knows, the better off the district is. We've, we've always believed that and that's the, that's the approach that we're going to take with the referendum also. Pulling all of this together, if, if all three of these questions were to pass and state aid remained, or state funding for that remained at approximately thirty percent, the district would still see a reduction in property taxes. And the reason being that the, this upcoming year is the final payment of the existing debt. So that will be expiring, that's about four million dollars in property taxes. We structured this originally, and again, here, to be a two-thirds, one-third split. So two-thirds reinvestment in the district facilities and one-third to allow the reduction in property taxes. So even if all of these were to pass, because of expiring debt and because we coordinated our efforts with that, you can still expect to see a property tax reduction, even if all three of these were to pass. Taxpayers have a seat at the table and we felt that it was important that they're represented in those decisions as well. So where do we go from here? There are, before we can make decisions on what the impact on, on programs and services are going to be with the beginning in the 2020, 2021 budget, we need a couple of important pieces of information. We need to see how the referendum does in November because if it's unsuccessful, then there's going to be components of that that need to be included in the annual budgets and which, which further crowds out space for programs that are, that are valued by this community. That's November, we'll know the answer to that. And then in March is the release of state aid numbers for the 2020, 2021 budget. We want to see what impact, you know, the, the legislative advocacy work that we have been doing, will continue to do. There's also legal action underway that we're part of with, with other districts, challenging the constitutionality of, of this aid reduction and making our case of both legally, legislatively, from an advisory perspective. We're going, we will continue to pursue that and we want to engage the community in joining the pursuit of that and press our elected officials to make what we think are, are more fair decisions with regard to the allocation of funding to school districts. But all along the way, the administrative team here will be formulating budget recommendations for, in preparation of any and all scenarios that we may encounter in designing the 2020, 2021 budget. And once those two critical pieces of information are received, we'll start having those conversations with the board and publicly about how the districts will need to be reshaped with the, and, and there will be a, a pullback on what we're able to do right now. Perhaps do it in a different way, but there certainly will be a, a noticeable impact on the quality of the education that this community's grown accustomed to if a number of these factors fall into the wrong column. So that's the overall context, economic context of the district's financial position. The budget being put forward tonight does not include any reduction in programs, services. It's flat. We are, we have accelerated the use of our surplus, which creates additional challenges in the future. But it does allow us time to make real thoughtful decisions on how we're, we're going to change the district to conform with the resources available. It also affords us time to, to make our case through advocacy and, and legal action and hopefully change the direction of state funding in the future for Freehold Regional High School District. So as always, please feel free to reach out to myself or, or the administrative team or the board. If there's any questions or comments, we'll be happy to be very responsive to you. And look forward to additional information regarding the referendum, which will start to come out once we get closer to the election date so that the, the information's as, as up-to-date and relevant as possible. Thank you.